All right, good evening. We had a call to order. The meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission's regular meeting for Tuesday, April 16th. Would you please bow your heads, join me in prayer? Dear God, we pray that you will bless and guide us through this meeting. Help us to have productive discussions that will broaden our perspectives. Help us to resolve any disputes gracefully and find principles that we all can agree upon. Help us to generate good plans that are practical, sustainable, and easily implemented. Guide us towards the best way to accomplish actions in your goals, and in your name we pray. Amen. Please join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. God bless Texas.
All right, thank you, and welcome. I want to acknowledge a couple of guests we have here tonight. Where do you run to, Mr. -- oh, he's outside. Judge Russo is here. We wanted to welcome him, Councilmember Tucker, Councilmember McNeil, so thank you for attending. And I also want to acknowledge Mr. Easter. We thank you for your service on this commission. You were always a great partner up here, and wish you all the best in your upcoming challenges. Okay, so I'm going to move on to item four, citizens' comments. I only have one, but of course, if a citizen wants to make a comment, please, they're welcome to come on up. So, Mr. Crawford.
Tony Crawford, 104 Lavender Place in McLendon-Chisholm. As many of you know, I've spoken passionately about the one acre, one home, one acre in the comp plan, and I'm still in favor of that, to remain in the comp plan and to be even strengthened. The growth of the city needs to reflect our rural feel. However, I also know that life is about compromise. And the reason I was talking to you tonight was simply because I know that the city council has turned down the ordinance for Mr. Webb's project around City Hall. I see a -- I was thankful that they did that. That was a very badly written ordinance for what they were wanting to do, five feet setbacks, 70-foot fronts. It was just going to be a sea of houses. It would present, you know, an extremely dense grouping of structures. While one acre is preferred because it will maintain responsible growth, it will help maintain our traffic so that we don't immediately outgrow our roads, avoid the look of every other small town that has exploded into a sea of roofs, maintain our home values, hold off the need for a law enforcement agency, and help, and believe it or not, I believe that's a good thing, and help dictate commercial growth. The Webb -- however, the Webb project around City Hall is one in which compromise may be in order. When I say compromise, I still have a look in mind. If the neighborhood has the look of Stone Lee in Heath, and I don't know if y'all have seen Stone Lee off of 550, it can be a good thing, especially around the Heritage Center here, and in line with what a downtown area of other small towns that you see have. A friend of mine is on P&amp;Z in Heath and has told me that Heath is wanting to maintain development like Stone Lee because it will meet all the items I stated above. We don't want to outdrive our headlights. Estate lots are lots with at least 120-foot fronts with, I think, believe the ordinance says 25-foot setbacks on the sides, and I think it's, I can't remember what it is from the street, but wide streets. I believe this deal here was a, did not have wide streets at all. The houses were bunched together, so it was just a very poorly written ordinance, and the city council turned it down unanimously, and they should have. I would like to see the streets as boulevard size, and I think that would help our town grow responsibly. 70, 80, or 90-foot fronts with five-foot setbacks does not denote a rural area. Let's make McLendon-Chisholm unique. As yourself, do you want to have a nice wide tree-lined streets with estate lots or a sea of roofs? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Anyone else have any comments they want to make? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda items. So tonight's going to be a short P&amp;Z meeting, but also is the first Capital Improvement Advisory Committee meeting, the CIAC, which the city council has asked Planning and Zoning to step in to provide, be part of that process. That process is going to be explained tonight by Kim Lee Horn. So I think for expedience, it would be easiest if we just moved through the Planning and Zoning agenda, and then adjourn, and then we'll form as the CIAC, if that's acceptable to everybody. Okay? All right, great. Okay, so first, first item of business for the Planning and Zoning Commission is approval of the minutes from the 19th of March meeting, item 5 dot 1, and I'll look for a motion.
Make the motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. Any discussion concerning the minutes? Everybody had a chance to review them, and no input? All right. Okay, so no discussion, and I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that unanimous. And then I'm going to skip forward to item 6 dot 1, zoning ordinance update, the Planning and Zoning Commission responsibility on timely reports and recommendations to better address the needs of the city. At this point, Asa, I'm going to turn it over to you so you can discuss what you wanted to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. So I sent you all two documents last Thursday. So one of them was, they're both for updates to the ordinances. So one of them is for Chapter 6, Health and Sanitation. It's section 6.03.006, and it has to do with amendments. I have the language there, and then I have the proposed language under it, as well as for the actual ordinances for Chapter 14, Exhibit 14A, Article 4 for zoning ordinances in the second document. I know that this is something that Mr. Kipit and I have been talking about, is creating SF 1.0 zoning districts, and so I have done that in here as well. I've gone a bit further, so as you all know, we have zoning, SF 1.5. So what I've done is I've gone through and I've created three different, I guess, three new zoning districts. So it would be SF. It's SF 0.5 or half-acre lots, SF 0.75, three-quarter acre lots, and then SF 1.0. So those would be the three that I would be proposing to add to the zoning districts. Those are the two documents that I've submitted, and in that email, I did put a timeline. I'm happy to take any initial feedback here, and I can write it down, but I did request to get Commissioner feedback by April 26, which is next Friday, to give you guys two weeks to go through the ordinance, to go through the proposed changes, ask me any questions and kind of things of that nature. So I will open it up. If you guys want to do any initial feedback or any initial reactions that you have, I can do that now, or I can, we can, I can wait and have you guys email it if you want to leave comments, if you want to talk on the phone and do that, we can do it, however you want to get me the comments. I just ask that they be over to me by next Friday, the 26th.
So before I open this to Commissioners to ask questions, I just want to remind the Commission that we're not taking action on this tonight. This is just to provide feedback to the city planner for these considerations, and then it will be brought forward to us at a future, future time. And it's, since it is, and I'll also say, since it is a zoning change, change the zoning ordinance, my understanding is this is also going to require a public hearing, a sequence of public hearings, so this is not something that will be done.
Can I get a copy of this document?
Sure.
The modifications that you suggested.
There you go. That's, yeah, I, if you haven't had a chance to, if you haven't had a chance to read it, maybe, Asa, what you could do is go through and be a little more specific in each of your recommendations, and then I'll let the Commissioners ask questions.
Yeah, not a problem. So we will, so we'll start with zoning for Article 4 for the zoning districts. So like I said, I did 0.5 half-acre, single-family district, 0.75 three-quarter acre lots, and then one acre lots. So we have 1.5. So essentially, all that I did was take the requirements for the single-family 1.5 and essentially just reduce those. So for the SF 0.75, all of those numbers that are in that chart are going to be exactly half of what is in the SF 1.5. Everything that's in the SF 1.0 will have, the number will be 25% less than 1.5, and then half an acre lots will be 25% less in terms of all of the numbers. So that would be lot area, width, depth, front yard, side yard, rear yard, all of those things are exactly 25% less as we go down. So that, those are essentially the changes that I'm proposing. It's kind of just the half-acre zoning, three-quarter acre zoning, and then one acre zoning. And then, and that is how I found those numbers. It's just kind of a reduction by 25%.
All right, so I'll start. I know, Mr. Rodeo, I'm going to start with you.
Mr. Woodbury, I was, I was quite surprised when, when I received these emails from you regarding these charges, these changes. In view of the candidate forum the other night, each one of the candidates that were sitting here, and I happened to have Mr. Neal's emphatic no as to a reduction in the density of one acre minimum lot. So my question is, no on this, my answer would be no on this, but why would you undertake that, knowing the feeling of these gentlemen sitting up here, knowing the feeling of council, knowing the feeling of our citizens, to propose a half-acre, a three-quarter acre, or even more density when, you know, the people over here are saying, no, one acre is the minimum? Who instructed you? Did council instruct you, or who instructed you to spend your time proposing these language changes to our, to our amendments? I just don't understand why we, why staff would even devote time to doing this, when nobody, has somebody asked you to do this?
Well, I think it goes back to kind of the public comment about compromise, and I think that the city is growing at a rapid pace, and so I just, I want to make sure that we have enough room for residential and commercial, number one, and then, number two, it was the insistence that we follow the comprehensive plan 100%. So, let me just redo this. So the reason that I did it like this is so there are certain stipulations that will, that will, I guess if this is passed, there are certain stipulations with the half-acre and three-quarter acre zoning. That's just for those two. And so that would be this. So the single-family residential district SF 0.5 is designated for residential lots having a minimum size of one-half of an acre when developed in connection with a subdivision development drawn from one tract consisting of at least 20 dwellings. The single-family residential SF 0.5 shall require an agreement between the City of McLendon-Chisholm and the owner or developer to develop and maintain a neighborhood park with a minimum ratio of one acre dedicated to parkland and open spaces per every 25 homes. The developer further agrees to deed over, to the city, any neighborhood park or parks within the development within 10 years of the development completion, and then finally, it shall require an agreement between the City of McLendon-Chisholm and the owner slash developer to develop and maintain neighborhood sidewalks and trail systems where applicable with native landscaping and/or rural decorative items reflecting the heritage of the city. So for the half-acre and three-quarter acres, I tried to, like I said, council may decide to approve half-acre, three-quarter acre subdivisions from time to time as is their prerogative. However, if they do, these are the things. So I tried to, I tried to do the compromise. So development is here and development is coming, but if you are going to develop, I guess, smaller, I guess, smaller acre lots, then we are going to be requiring that you meet all of the rest of these things from the comprehensive plan. I do want to just point out that there was, there was opposition to the web development behind us, but there was no opposition to what was across the street from us. They don't have parks, and they don't have trails. All they're going to have is houses. But they have the one acre, but they have the one acre lot, but they don't have parks, and they don't have trails, and they don't have other things that the comprehensive plan talks about. So I think that by, I guess if we, we could say that, oh, the council, the council can say that we only will approve two, or we only will approve three, three-quarter acre subdivisions per year. They can do that if they want to. I just want to make sure that if it is anything developed that's less than an acre, that we are getting everything else out of the comprehensive plan that the citizens have said that they want.
I haven't heard one citizen say, in the number of years that I've been on this committee or in attendance at any city council meeting, that they wanted half-acre. Now, I hear all, now, from my standpoint, the developers are saying, yeah, they want it. And on this second part about the agreement, pay money in lieu of land dedication, 20 years and all that. The county in which I live before made this agreement, okay? But it was with their flood control district. So the developers, instead of doing retention ponds or detention ponds, paid a certain sum of money to the flood control district, and the flood control district would then do the improvements. Well, lo and behold, this went on for years and years and years, and there was a lot of money in the flood control treasury, and all of a sudden, all these other city departments started borrowing money from these, this fund. And lo and behold, hurricane, or tropical storm Allison came through and flooded the whole west side. Well, it was because the detention ponds and retention ponds and flood control had not been done. And so the developers blamed this one, and this one blamed this one, but most people had water in their house. We had 36 inches of water in our house, 36 inches. And so I really, this really distresses me, that staff would even do this, because unless the city council requests this? Mr. Tucker? No, I didn't think so. I mean, what, I haven't heard one citizen want half-acre lot. I've heard developers say, we wish we had half acres or more. But what prompted you or staff to do this?
So there are roughly 6,500 people that live here, and I just, I want to make sure that, my thing is this, and this is, I guess, about the crux of it. I truly, truly, truly believe that this city should have cradle-to-grave housing. And I think that that means buying your first house, buying your, your next house, and I think that diversifying the housing stock within the city so that we can diversify that tax base, and I think that this is a way to do that, is to kind of make sure that if you want to live in McLendon-Chisholm because you like the rural feel, you like those things, but you're, you can afford a $600,000 house, but you still, you like this rural feel, you like this community, I think that we should have cradle-to-grave housing. So that means housing for your first house, or maybe your second house, before you can afford the six or the $800,000 house. And so I think that this is a way to kind of get the things that we want to get from developers when they're developing, and then also diversifying housing stock tax base and that sort of thing.
You say "we," Mr. Woodbury, but I don't, I don't see a "we." I see you. I don't see one person in here that agrees with a half-acre lot or three-quarter lot. If there is somebody, raise your hand.
I don't see anybody.
I mean, I don't see anybody, and I really don't, I really don't understand why staff would do this. That really perplexes me. If council didn't suggest it, if citizens didn't suggest it, if there wasn't input of any kind, why do the initiative of this, of these ordinance, of these proposed language changes? I just don't understand that. I'm sorry, Mr. Woodbury, I just don't. I vote no on these two, by the way.
I'm sorry, sir.
I vote no on these two, by the way.
No, no, we're not, we're not voting, so, thank you. Thank you for your comments, sir. All right?
Very passionate about this, as you can tell.
Absolutely.
Let me apologize, I missed the email, I'm going to have to read it and look into it. I would agree, I would agree with my fellow commissioner next to him. And I would ask, the way, the way you explain that, is it how you feel? Okay? And it should be, you work for the city, correct? You live in the city?
I can't afford to live in the city.
Okay. But what I'm saying is, then you should, you should do your job, the will of the city, the way the city wants it to be done, and the way the citizens want it to be done. That would be the advice I would give you. And I'm going to have to read over this.
Thank you. Tom, I know you have some thoughts here. All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Freeze, any thoughts? Any feedback?
I will be sending an email and going back and forth on this. There are two statements that you made that perplexed me a little bit, and just to get more of what your thought process was. One was saying that development is coming and development is here. I agree with that, but I don't know if we necessarily agree with what that scope and scale is. So I just want to see if there's a really disconnect between what your thought process is as a city planner versus what ours is as a commission. The second thing is, I tried writing down the statement, you said, as fast as I could, but you had said something to the essence of, that it was in relation to that the city council could, if they wanted to, let go a high density development of a half-acre lot. Without this ordinance change, how could they do that?
Are you asking, I guess, how the city council could go about approving a half-acre development?
Right, even though they have no way of classifying it.
It would be a PD, a planned development.
Okay.
And that's how we've been getting around the 1.5 acres. It's everything that's not 1.5, it's always a PD. It's always a PD.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Woodbury, for your explanations on this, and not in any way in the means of attack, just as a question. I've been looking at the land use plans and things, and as I was reading through this, but is there a specific request to put this together? I know that question has been somewhat asked here tonight, but is there a specific request for putting this together? I'm trying, I'm just trying to get the context, not put you in the spot.
So the request was just to, the request was to review the ordinances in terms of zoning and kind of update the zoning districts to kind of see if we needed to add any zoning districts, to see if we needed to kind of update any of the language, any of the rear setbacks, if we needed to update any of those numbers to kind of jive more with the city feel. And so it was just to look at the zoning district ordinances and kind of update those, see if we needed to add anything. Definitely the one acre zoning is definitely.
Who suggested? Was it just you, or was it someone else on the city council or where?
Well, so this was, so this was discussions between city council and city staff. So we had kind of been discussing this internally about kind of updating zoning districts and kind of things that we, we might want to see, or if we needed to update numbers and things like that.
Select and vote out.
So the one thing that does come to mind is that we did have the joint council session with P&amp;Z back in late January, and we did discuss about going back through and updating some of the ordinances. I'm not going to keep belaboring this, and I think we have hammered this hard enough. My only question I have you, or have for you is, Mr. Coker, when he was here, we had also brought up other ordinances besides the ones that you have discussed today, and when are those going to be addressed and brought back to us?
So the, so the ordinances that you're, these, these were the ones that I was assigned, and so the other ordinances, those are ones that Mr. Coker is working on. These are the ones that I'm working on. And so what I can do is I will get you a date.
Okay.
A firm date.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Asa, so you have feedback. I think the commission, obviously Commissioners can individually respond back on their email.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, did you have any initial comments that you wanted me to write down?
I'm going to provide them right now.
Okay.
So I'll invite them to do that. I'll, so I appreciate the initiative, staff, I appreciate the staff initiative to ask questions, and clearly in my mind, since the comprehensive plan was created, we need a 1.0 zoning ordinance. I mean, we have, that's, that would be helpful, and I think that was, you know, conditional for the conversation we had for the development across the street, right? That was a, it had to become a PD, even though it was uniformly 1.0. So that one in my mind needs to get pushed through. The other variations, I would, we'll let the public, let that go through the process if the staff wants to bring that forward. One thing, though, is we have to be careful relative to the comprehensive plan and future land use map, because if we change the ordinance to create new zoning conditions that don't exist within the future land use map, right, we're, we're going to get ahead of our headlights on that. So, and then, I think it's, you know, I think it was, I think back to the joint session that Mr. Freeze brought up. One of the discussions was around making sure we're, I think we created, talked about it two ways. One was to have a strategic plan for the city, which would crystallize the view of the, of the residents and the citizens for what they want the city to develop, how they want it to develop. But I think the other part of that is, if there are areas within the comprehensive plan, it can be approved as a plan, so that always will be available, and we could consider those as well. But just remember, anything, any changes to the comprehensive plan have to go through the same process, right? The same notice to public, same public hearings, public comment, and we did that extensively when we developed the one admittedly a couple of years ago now, but I, in general, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I don't see a public outcry for anything smaller than 1.0. So now, the sub discussion you just had, so I'll just say for a half acre, I think that guidelines on what a half acre would look like within a PD might be useful in terms of any discussions the city would have with the developer if they were considering that within a PD, and I think there is, we heard sentiment tonight, there, citizens are willing to have a logical discussion about development if it is presented as a win-win for the city and, you know, for everybody involved. And I think that the thing that I always, in my mind, fall back to is country, estate, look and feel is what the citizens of the city want. And we can, so we could have... Uh, and we can, so we could haggle about, is that a 300 foot front, or a 200 foot front, or a 100 foot front? I mean, we can have those discussions. But at the end of the day, it has to be, you know, definitely has to be a country look and feel to it. Uh, we're not, we're not interested in, uh, you know, I appreciate there's our surrounding cities, but I am not interested in some of the developments I see in, in some of our sister cities down here. You know, we can, I, I think we can survive uniquely without having to, to go to high density. So, that said, again, appreciate the initiative, thank you for bringing that forward, and, uh, we'll get you the rest of the feedback.
Thank you all.
Yeah, one last comment. And, and you hit it right on the nail on the head when I got the, the understanding of how city council could go around with the PD, I think it's great, exactly what you're saying. These are future PD requirements, that's exactly where it belongs. The, but then I, I had a chance to scan back into my notes when I was referencing the joint council meeting that we had with ENZ. And the note I specifically took down, though, is that we wanted to update the ordinances to be consistent with comprehensive plan. And, and so I thought that would've been the direction that you had received and were giving. You know, that, so this is the part that goes back, I wanna have that discussion with you over email, I'll give you a phone call, and let's talk about it, and see if we're in the same headspace. But I wanna see the stuff that we're trying to change, or even make a plan that exists, rather than trying to come up with what a, a plan beyond that should look like. We haven't had that conversation with the public yet. We've had the conversation with the public about the comprehensive plan. And I think that's what needs to be our, our vision, our goal, is to codify that.
Thank you. All right? All right, we've concluded on item six dot one, so that brings us to the end of the Planning and Zoning Commission agenda, so I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, and second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right? So that is unanimous. And now we're going to, now that we've adjourned this meeting, we're gonna move on to welcome our partner from Kimley Horn and move to our critical, our Capital Improvement Advisory Committee session. And we have two future, uh, planning zoning commissioners that are gonna be part of this committee. So I would invite you to come on up front and center, and, uh, so you can get to, you'll be part of this committee, you know, formality will get it all there, uh, right? I mean, it's, it's okay if we do that? Oh, yeah, okay, good. Yeah, come on up, Mr. Packer, I know you're shy. So, and I'll turn it over to you, sir.
All right, good evening. Oh, there we go. Uh, yeah, good evening, and, uh, welcome to the first meeting of the McLennan-Chisholm Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. Uh, so I'm Pete Kelly with Kimley Horn, and I'm the engineer responsible for doing the impact fee study, calculating the maximum assessable fee. So tonight, our main goal is we want to run through the basics of what an impact fee, uh, study is. So if you were at the March 26 council meeting, uh, you'll see a lot of the same information. We've also added a couple of slides to talk about what is the, what does the CIC do? Uh, what is the role of the committee during and after the impact fee, uh, study and after the adoption of that? And so we'll, uh, just to preface this, uh, council is gonna require two meetings in order to legally adopt, to go through, uh, state law. And so we're gonna break up kind of half the study in the first meeting, and then the second half, and then the, and then the fees in the second meeting. And we're gonna do a similar approach with the CIC meeting. So tonight, we're essentially just covering, uh, the first few components of the impact fee study, and then when we come back for the second meeting, we'll, we'll cover the rest.
Uh, do you want us to have questions during your presentation, or do you want us to wait until after it's over?
Why don't we, uh, do questions at the end, and we can just go back to relevant slides? If that, if that works for you. So, impact fees are, just to go over what they are, what their purpose is, they're a one-time fee to serve new development, uh, so these are not fees that go to existing or current development, uh, or to existing residents, or, nor are they a recurring fee. They are one-time fee. The purpose is to recover infrastructure costs that are required to serve new growth. So essentially, the idea is that when growth comes in, they pay a fee to help pay for their impact. Um, that's essentially what the purpose of an impact fee is. Um, it's a legal way, uh, to collect a flexible fee for infrastructure, and it gives, uh, the city freedom and flexibility to spend the money on high priority projects within, uh, the service area. No, it does not replace muds. Uh, it, it acts in a similar way, um, but it, it does not replace muds. There are many cities that have impact fees and, and muds as well. So why use impact fees? Uh, impact fees are equitable. You've seen probably issues where, uh, sometimes the last developer to come in gets the benefit of all the infrastructure the first developer has put in. Uh, this ensures that it's equitable, so that you pay an equal fee, whether you're first or the last on the street. Uh, it's predictable, so the impact fee schedule, rate scheduled to be, uh, published online, so that developers can see what the fees are, uh, when they're considering coming to McLennan-Chisholm. Ensures accountability, so there are checks and balances within, uh, the state law and the statute of how this is done. And, uh, it requires that the impact fees collected be spent within a certain amount of time or refunded to the property owner that paid those fees. Uh, it's also proportional, so that's, that's our main job, is to calculate, uh, what the impact is, what the cost of the infrastructure is, to make sure the impact fee is proportional. Next, we'll cover what impact fees can pay for and what they can't pay for. The main thing that they're intended for is to pay for the construction costs of capital improvements um, that are on the impact fee CIP, or Capital Improvements Plan, uh, which can also include the survey and engineering fees required for that, land acquisition costs, including court awards, debt service of impact, debt service to fund the, uh, construction of the CIP projects, and also the planning studies, including this, uh, study today. What it can't pay for, um, it can't pay for anything that's not included in the capital improvements plan. Uh, can't pay for repair or operation remains of existing facilities, or upgrades to serve existing development. It also can't pay for administration costs of operating the impact fee program. Uh, so just, just to touch on what the role of, of this committee is in this study process, so we go back just one slide, might've advanced automatically, oh, here we go. So the role of the study, and this is essentially language directly from chapter 395, and that's to assist city council in adopting land use assumptions, uh, to review the capital improvements plan and file written comments, and to file written, so essentially filing written comments on the land use assumptions, capital improvements plan, and impact fee. Next slide, please. So... That's gonna be in the roadway impact fee study? That's gonna be, that's gonna be in the roadway impact fee study? Uh, and we have a draft report, we'll get that sent your way. Correct, well, correct, yes. There's no adopted capital improvements plan, um, currently. Uh, that's part of what this process is for, is to present that, the draft CIP, to this committee, and to get your, your feedback, and to get your comments to council on that. Um, and just a, an important clarification on that, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about the CIP in just a second, but, um, the impact fee CIP is not the same as the city CIP, so this isn't a program order of projects that are funded. This is just a, a plan showing where impact fee dollars can be spent. Um, so the impact fee is different from the, the five-year CIP. So after, after adoption of the impact fee, the role of this committee is really to monitor and evaluate the implementation of the capital improvements plan, so as impact fee dollars are spent on CIP projects to overs, to help oversee that. Also to file semi-annual reports, uh, with respect to the progress of the capital improvements plan, and to report to council on any perceived inequities in implementing the plan, or imposing the impact fee. It's also the role of this committee to advise council on when impact fees need to be updated to reflect current trends, uh, current infrastructure needs. Uh, so if there's a change to, uh, the zoning, to the market, or there, if there's a change to the thoroughfare plan, that would be one of those things that this committee might advise council to, to update the impact fee to, to reflect that. Can you read the next slide? So an impact fee is gonna have five basic components, and tonight's focus is really on those first three components. Uh, those, those are really the core, that's really the core math that we're talking about to get to the maximum assessable fee. Uh, but those three components are the land use assumptions, uh, the service units, and the capital improvements plans for impact fees. Uh, in the, in the next meeting, we'll talk about maximum assessable fee calculation and, and the credit calculation required by state law. So the land use assumptions, really what we need to do for an impact fee is calculate out growth over the next 10 years. And this is, this is a forecast of what we would expect based on, uh, a number of different data sources that we looked at. Um, so, so those data sources we looked at are, are partial data, it's gonna get a baseline where we are today. Uh, we looked at the comprehensive plan, uh, we looked at growth trends, uh, from recent history, and also the known developments, the planned developments that, that are coming in to the city. Uh, so we combine all those to look at the next 10-year horizon, if you will. Um, that's, that's part of state law, we can't look beyond 10-year, uh, growth. It's, it's a sliding 10-year window. And although you do have, uh, eight different, uh, land use categories in your future land use plan, in, in our impact fee study, we boil those down to four basic categories. We have residential, basic, service, and retail. Residential includes single, um, and if there were ever to be any multifamily, that'd be part of that. Uh, then there's basic, which would include industrial and agricultural uses. Service would include office and institutional uses, and then retail would include any shopping, dining, entertainment, essentially non-residential, that doesn't fall in any of those other three categories.
And, and just to be clear, there's a study, there's a more detailed analysis that falls behind this?
Yes.
And, and that will be provided to us?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna get that to ASAP.
Thank you.
So, with our analysis, what we're projecting over the next 10 years is a growth. Uh, so this is not total, this is additional units, in addition to what exists today, a growth of 2,441 residential units, um, and, uh, about 65,000 square feet of employment use between, split between service and retail. It, it includes trilogy, um, I'll have to look back at, uh, which D.R. Horton development is it?
Tom, I don't think it includes that, because the D.R. Horton is, uh, outside of the ETJ. And, and this study might explain the difference between where, what we look at relative to these impact fees, relative for the city boundary, in the ETJ.
Yes, that's correct, thank you for bringing that up. For roadway impact fees, we're limited to looking in the city limits only. Uh, later, when we're able to come back and revisit water and wastewater impact fees, those can, uh, be incurred outside the city limits, uh, and used to build infrastructure outside the city limits, as long as it's when the, within the water service area boundary. But tonight, we're just talking about roadway, and that's limited to the city limits. So what we need to do, when, after we project out our, our use, is in terms of homes and square footage, we have to convert that to, what does that mean for traffic demand, for travel demand? So we convert that to what's called a service unit. And this is defined by the state law in chapter 395. And the definition of a service unit is "a standardized measure of consumption attributable to an individual unit of development, calculated in accordance with generally accepted engineering or planning standards, and based on historical data and trends applicable to the political subdivision in which the individual unit of development is located during the previous 10 years." Uh, so the short version of what, of how to describe what we're using is our service unit is a vehicle mile. Um, and so that's essentially the capacity consumed by a trip one mile in length of one car. And so that's how you measure it. And the next slide might help, uh, explain that a little bit better. So what is a vehicle mile? It's a combination of two variables. Uh, that is the trip, uh, the trip rate, or how many trips a certain use generates uh, during the, the PMP hour, and multiply that by the trip length. So in other words, how long would you drive, uh, to go to a certain destination? Uh, and so we get those from, uh, national sources. Trip generation, or the trip rate, comes from the Trip Generation Manual uh, from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is a national, uh, data source. And the trip length, we get that from a couple of different places. Uh, we look at the National Household Travel Survey, which has local data, so the DFW Metroplex, and also travel demand modeling. Next slide. Uh, so just a, a couple examples of what the vehicle mile, uh, demand is for a couple of different land use types. For a single family, for a single-family home, we get the trip rate, again, from the ITE Trip Generation Manual. Uh, and you, you can see there on the screen that that's, uh, .94 vehicles, uh, per home in the PMP, and we multiply that by the trip length of four miles to get a, a demand service unit of 3.76 vehicle miles. That's... Yeah, that, that's a very fair question. So we do a couple of different things when we're looking at it, and if I remember right, the original trip length from the National Household Travel Survey is about 10 miles, 9.7 something. Um, and, but we know that if you're going home, let's say from work, half your trip's gonna be generated by your work, or your school, or your, whatever you're, you're coming from. And then the other half, we attribute that to your destination. And so what we do is we, we do what's called an origin destination reduction. So we take our trip lengths, and we cut them in half, essentially. The second thing we do is we have to make sure those trip lengths are limited to the size of the service area, and the state law requires your service area be no larger than six miles. Um, so we are able to make McLennan-Chisholm all one service area without splitting it into additional service areas. Uh, but essentially, our, our trip lengths are all cut down below six miles, because we can only account for the capacity consumed within the city limits. So a, a trip length of greater than six miles would, would not pass the, uh, state law requirements. And, and just to provide a similar example, uh, for a shopping plaza, so that's technically a, a smaller, like, strip retail center. Uh, we start with our trip rate of 5.19 vehicles in the PMP hour. And then for commercial uses, we have something called a pass-by reduction, which accounts for trips that are already driving along a certain road, but a new business pops up, and you're gonna have to stop there on your way home from, from work now, or from school. Um, so that, that doesn't actually generate, uh, new trips that weren't on the road before. Uh, so there's a pass-by reduction, and then we multiply that by, uh, the trip length that we have to get us to 9.6 vehicle miles, and that's per thousand square feet of, uh, of retail use of that type.
Yes, I, uh, one question is, the, many of our developments are fairly large, and they are private roads. How does that factor in?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Uh, we have developments that are fairly large and have, uh, private roads on them. So how would, how do private roads factor into the analysis?
Um, that, that's a very good question. So that's when we go over to the supply side of the equation. So right now, this is sort of the, the demand, we're projecting, what's the demand gonna be? And then that helps us understand what's the supply needed to serve that demand over the next 10 years. Um, but for the capital improvements plan, specifically, actually, can we just go to the next, um, slide? So to develop a capital improvements plan, it, it has to be based off of an adopted plan uh, by the governing body, the municipality. Uh, so in this case, we can only put roads on the CIP that are on the, also on the thoroughfare plan. So any private roads, or small local roads that are not on the thoroughfare plan, are not eligible to be on the CIP. And those are roads that developments are fully responsible, typically to build for adequate access. They, they would be subject to the fees, because they're, they're still generating traffic, which is gonna use thoroughfare plan roads throughout the city. They're not just using their own, their own roads. Uh, but, but to continue to explain a little bit more about the, the capital improvements plan, we've already touched on the fact that it needs to be based on an adopted plan, and so we, we use the master thoroughfare plan for that. And, and to create the CIP, uh, we, the impact fee CIP... And, and to create the CIP, we, the impact fee CIP, we've looked at all the roads on the thoroughfare plan, and which of those roads are not yet built to full capacity or not built yet at all. And so we'll go to the next slide. That led to the creation of this capital improvements plan, which, when we send you the draft report, it's gonna have a list of all these projects. There's tiny little yellow numbers on each road that shows that that's a CIP project. There will be an accompanying table and a sheet for each one of these roads explaining what the project is. But essentially, it's all those, all those roads would be potential future projects to be widened out to the ultimate thoroughfare plan capacity to accommodate for that, that growth in the future.
So, so I guess, just so I have it correct in my mind, and the initial, the initial capital improvement plan is based on, based off the thoroughfare plan. As the thoroughfare plan changes going forward, that's where our future, where the future analysis would come in, and where our semi-annual or annual assessments would, reassessment of the plan would come into play.
Yes, that, that's 100% correct. The requirement of state laws, that the study be updated no less than every five years. However, if there's, if there's a major update in between and less than five years, then this committee can encourage council, we should, we should update earlier to reflect those changes. But the requirement is on a five-year basis. So just to walk through a couple of the, the legend items that you'll see on this map right here. We have these orange roads are, those are currently existing roads that according to the thoroughfare plan need to be widened for future growth. And then there's dashed red roads on there that are roads that don't exist today, but are on the thoroughfare plan that will need to be built in the future. And typically, but the way we see this happening is it typically is development-driven. Where developments are coming in, that's typically where the roads need to be built to make sure to accommodate that growth. And then the black roads you see on here are, are impact fee non-eligible roads. Primarily, those are outside the city limits, those roads are.
Those are the ones in ETJ.
Correct, yeah. And we go to the next slide. So those are the, the three main components that we wanted to discuss tonight and get in front of you. And I know that there's a lot of technical information here and questions you might have. And I hope that the draft report, when you get a chance to read that, will, will help some of that. But I'll outline the next steps through the adoption process, and then we can continue, we can go back to any other questions you have on the land use assumptions, service units, or the CIP. But essentially, like I mentioned earlier, it's, it's a two-meeting or two-step adoption process. That's the minimum, it could be, council could choose to meet again to discuss it even more. But so far, what we have scheduled, after tonight's meeting with this committee, we'll be meeting with council for the first public hearing, discussing the same exact information we discussed tonight. That'll be on May 14th, and then we'll be coming back to this committee to discuss the maximum fee and credit calculation on May 21st, and then having that same discussion with council and, and potentially adopting the study on June 25th. And the primary requirement, again, for this committee is to provide written comments to council five business days before the public hearing.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's, I, that's a good place to come back to start questions because, so the first public hearing is on 5/14. Now, as my understand, the Texas code that requires this committee to produce a written comments by, on or around May 7th, by my calculation, is that, do I have that data about right?
Yes.
So I guess my question for staff is, how are we gonna do that?
I, I can, I can provide an answer, an option for you.
Absolutely.
What we've seen commonly happen is that the committee may discuss whether they want to recommend approval of specifically the land use assumptions and the capital improvements plan, and make a motion to do that. And then the minutes of this meeting would then therefore act as the, the written comments for council. The other option is, as you, as a committee can decide, these are the comments we have. If you had any concerns about the, the growth projections or the, or the CIP, you could document those and, and, you know, you could send a one-page with those comments over to council.
Since we're talking about a compliance step, and I'm, I'm, this is my thought, I'm gonna offer this to the committee members, we haven't seen the data behind it, right? So making a motion and acting on it tonight would be difficult, given that, given those conditions. Now, since we have to have written comments prior to May 7th, that leaves us a relatively short window to potentially have a second meeting, ASAP, to, you know, at least give us time to go through all those and understand it. Because I, I do have a, I do have a couple of technical questions too, relative to the, to what.
Sure.
And I didn't, I wasn't privy to all the guidance you receive from city staff or council, so I can't. There is one specific question I have about stormwater and drainage. I know that, so I understand Texas code, those two items can be included in impact fees. As you noted on your maps, we have a lot of storm, we have a lot of floodplain in the city, significant amount. And there have been prior efforts to address flooding in this area by, to include federal funding for the conservation lakes, which are pop around the city. And I just wanna make sure that we're, since this is, this is vehicles, is that, is that the guide, only the guidance you receive from council to only address vehicles? Or is there a reason why the other storm runoff and storm drainage was not, storm, stormwater and drainage was not considered?
That, that's a great question. We don't have any separate called-out projects for drainage or storm runoff. However, in each of our CIP projects, we do look at whether it crosses the floodplain, and we'll build into the cost estimate whether there's culverts needed or a bridge needed for that road, which, as you can imagine, is gonna be the bulk of the cost of that road, making sure it goes over, over drainage. However, anything outside, it's basically between right-of-way, right-of-way, what are you doing there? So we, we account for culverts and bridges and any other drainage treatments for the road itself. But outside of that, the study doesn't look at that. Uh, that's a great question. So we're using vehicle miles for just the roadway impact fee service unit. For, when, when we do come back to do the water and wastewater impact fee studies, those service units will be your, your, essentially your water and wastewater meter connections. So we'll, we'll project out how many connections will be predicted to be added, and based on that, you know, what kind of water infrastructure do you need? Yes, yes, when, when the water and wastewater, those two studies, those are on hold for the time being. When we, when we do proceed with those two studies, we'll be following up. Those will have their own separate adoption process and, and separate set of meetings to discuss water and wastewater.
All right, so I, I think I understand now. So the guidance you received from city council was to look at road impact fees first, and then there will be follow-on. So the committee understands, so just make sure we're all on the same.
Yeah, I don't wanna misconstrue council, it's the guidance I received from city management.
Okay.
So they may have received that from council, but we received it from management.
No, that, that's, that's even better. So the city administrator directed you to look at roadways first, and then there will be follow-on efforts to look at other infrastructure.
Yeah, the three studies were contracted for roadway impact fees, water impact fees, and wastewater impact fees.
So as we present our, this is a co, open comment to the committee, I'm just, this is off the top of my head, but as we present any comments, we should always keep that in mind and be directive to council exactly what we looked at and what we considered. And obviously include reconations on what should also be considered. Because I know impact fees is, is becoming an increasing, increasingly hot topic around the totality of the county, not just here in McLennan's Chisholm.
Sure.
Is it Peter, am I right?
Pete, yes.
Pete, thank you, Pete. A couple of quick questions on About Page 8. You were talking about the land use assumptions, your land use categories, residential, basic, service, and retail. Can you give me one more time a quick description of basic? What did you say is basic, you were putting under the umbrella of basic?
So basic would be your industrial or agricultural uses primarily. Another way to describe those three uses would be your basic is your, your lower trip generators per square foot. Service would be kind of your medium trip generator, and then retail would be your high trip generator per square foot.
Okay, very good, very good. And you were talking about the future roadway as it applies to this form that we're talking about tonight. Are you using the cost of these future roads? Is that what I'm understanding, the cost of these future roads in your formula to develop this?
Yes, yeah, we're, we're costing out every one of those projects. We're doing a, a planning level cost projection for those. And also, and then dividing that essentially by the service units and growth. And that, that's essentially the calculation of the maximum fee.
Very good. Does, does that include inside-city limits or also in the ETJ on the future roads?
Just inside-city limits for roadways, roadway impact fees. When we come back later to do the water wastewater studies, those may include infrastructure outside the city limits.
Okay, okay, good, thank you, Pete.
Pete, um, kinda helped me understand something here. I'm trying to understand the benefits to the city for, for this, for this deal. Realizing that the city only has two roads, Clutz and Pullen, I believe, right? Do we have any other, are we responsible for any other roads, Clutz and Pullen? Okay, all right, okay. Well anyhow, all the streets that I live on and Mark lives on are private, okay? And city does not have water, city does not have sewer. What, what, what benefit is this program to the city, economic-wise? I, I don't understand, I mean, if it's, there's, there's money then, if they were building in, in, in a, in a subdivision that has a private street, that, that, that recovery cost, would that not go to the water company? Would that not go to, if it's on state highway, to the state? Or on foreign market road, would it not go to those people? What, what advantage, or what, what, what is the city looking at by, by, by this plan? I, I'm kinda hard-headed and I don't follow on that quickly, so you have to kinda go in-depth with me on this. But I, I just don't understand how this is, it's a benefit. Okay, what is that? Is that what this does? But, but I don't understand the economic standpoint. What, what, what economic benefit is the city getting?
And I think what, what this addresses is all of those roadway structures, like the culvert and everything, are either, either exist and have to be through or will be through.
Yes, but none of those are owned by the city, other than Pullen and. F-550, F-550 is gonna be owned by the city? 205 is gonna be owned by the city? So then TechStop would get that one, right?
So one, one way potentially to address that question.
Okay, if they become city roads, council hasn't approved any maintenance or, what is, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to think of the future cost associated with the city accepting all these roads. I understand it's a mechanism to recover that infrastructure cost, but, but the city does not have the infrastructure cost. What cost does the city have? It doesn't have water, it doesn't have electricity, it doesn't have sewer. What, 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 what infrastructure does the city have?
I, I think a fair, a fair way to put it probably is if, if you're not growing at all, it's probably not much benefit. But if you are growing at all, even a little bit, it's something that's there to help incur the cost of building roads. Say a large development comes in and suddenly all your two-lane roads are highly congested and intersections are backed up, and you need to widen or expand and make improvements, this adds an additional funding resource to do that. Now, let's say you, you, you don't get any growth coming in, you won't collect any fees, and then you also won't need to spend any of those fees.
So I think one way of looking at it is that, you think about these private roads, right now they are not doing anything. And yet they are going to have repairs done to them, so the, the city in some way is going to have to take ownership of that. And in taking ownership of it, these fees allow us to then take care and maintain. Because it's just a simple fact, once those developments got built and those roads got done, they've never been re-asked by the county, and that's the truth.
So I've got a question or two. One would be just a purely administrative. If you want people like me that did wait until the end to ask questions, please put a page number on here. That would really help as we go back. Okay, so starting with the water impact fees. So we've already talked about there's three categories that you believe that city council or that the city administration has talked to you about. What is the total list of categories that are available that impact fees can be assessed against? Is it very, I guess, is it very broad, or is it more narrow in scope? I'm just more or less trying to get a feel for what's the real scope of what this could be the city council can use to add in categories.
So the, the three primary ones that most Texas cities with impact fees use are roadway, water, and wastewater. There, there are other states that are looking into different types of impact fees as well. There's, there's states that will do environmental impact fees. Those, I'm not aware of are something that can be done in Texas. But I, I would defer there to your city attorney on what other potential impact fees could be pursued. What I can talk about are roadway, water, and wastewater.
So you, you had mentioned before that you have this capital improvement plans, it really is capital improvement plans with respect to the impact fees.
Yes.
You have a draft, when is that draft gonna be released to us?
We've sent it over to city administration, we just need to get them to get it over to you.
Okay, so I guess that's the next item for you to refer.
Yes, Commissioner, I can get that report over to you in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think, and I, just, we can tie this off, because.
I mean, it's really important that we, until we have that, we can't do the next step, which is get the, the life threatening. So I think we're gonna need that, and then I would suggest, recommend to the committees and to the deputy committee that we, we, we can meet on the third day. So, third day, Paul, you said. And that way we can respond, provide the necessary, uh, staff hours and get that fee there. Because there is a legal constraint here, I don't want, I really don't want to hammer that thing. So a legal constraint that we must, by Texas law, require to provide that, this could be a life-threatening input. The council applies to the, um, and that thing. this could provide written input, the council applies, um, and that, this is, this is a statute, so, so, the third bit seems to me to be a good date on, I don't know if it is now, so, like, that, if you're working, you're already, you have to have, you have to have committees, or on the slide, like, five or, five or eight person.
Um, I might expect the voting title, I mean, you have, well, we didn't-
We can always have this committee meeting in the firehouse, or we'll, we'll find, we'll find a place.
Fire station would be good.
Yeah, I think the, we've done that before, we've met, planning and zoning has met in the fire station before. And, and the one that went, the one right there. Yeah, we could use, or we could use the, the executive, I don't, I mean, I'm not sure what the open meeting requirements are and how that has to be noticed, so I'll let city staff help us out with that. But, I, yeah, I'm appreciative of the election sequence, but I'm also, the, the alternative would be have to delay this process, and, and delay council, I assume council wants to keep a-
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll figure it out, that part we can figure out, but if the 30th works, I guess that's, if folks can check their calendars, that would be pretty helpful.
And, Mr. Chairman, I did just check, so Tuesday, April 30th is the last day of early voting, so this, this will be used. Yeah, so, yeah, okay, just let me-
I'm gonna allow city staff to sort this out. You find us a place, we'll be there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next question was, so in your role of advisory committee during the study, you had mentioned in adopting the land use assumptions, how are those captured, where are they captured, who is cataloging them, where are they being exposed to the public?
So, the land use assumptions, ASA, would you mind going back a few slides? So, this right here is, is the result of the land use assumptions, this is, these are the main numbers that'll be going into the calculation. The, the backup data and the description for that's gonna be in that draft report, which they're gonna get over to you.
Okay, yeah, and I don't wanna say all this all sorts of making, but look more explanation of that. Even though you did go through some of it and how it was calculated, it's not that I wrote all of it down and remember it. So, in the next one, you get the role of advisory committee after adoption, you talk about the need to update or revise the, the land use assumptions and capital improvement plans and the impact fees. Is there anything legally about how often that can be changed by law, or is it something that can be fairly dynamic?
It can be updated at any time. It, it must be updated at least every five years, is, there's, so there's the minimum requirement. So, there's a clock, once you adopt it, five years from then, it needs to be adopted, updated again. You can update it earlier, like I said, it does have to go, if you're gonna change the land use assumptions or the CIP, you're gonna have to go through the council adoption process again, and have council approve that update. There are other updates to the administration of the program that don't require that process, but updating the study itself would require that.
I think Chris would, and I hear where you're coming from, so, as we look at this study, if we don't agree with it, we highlight that, and there'll be feedback to council, and then they can, they can decide what they wanna do, right? That's the-
Why don't we get along down the path that we're, you know, slave to, for, if it was the wrong choice, bad changes in socials?
So, so we're in complete control of our own destiny in my, my mind, and if we, as we look through this study, I, admittedly, I have glanced through it, I haven't read it in detail, and I only glanced through it when it was part of the packet for city council. So, as we find, you know, and that's, I'm, there's bright minds on this panel, so, as you guys identify issues, we'll, we'll highlight those to council if we don't, and, and that way council, because we, our job is to help council make the right decision ultimately, make the right decision on adoption. Because again, these are, not to overstate it, but there is a legal consequence here if we adopted incorrectly, or the assumptions are, are mismanaged, then, that could, you know, those, those fee rates could be challenged.
Right, and that's what I'm, was more concerned about, was the land use assumptions, if they, the projections are incorrect, then, you know, we're either in a bad trajectory or in a, that we're not getting enough fees, or, or in a bad trajectory from a legal system. So, that's, that's the sort of concern I got, because this is, this is, and I've done a lot of this, and I don't wanna be tied to the meeting.
That's why I love having engineers on this.
Yeah. Oh, that was the other, so, probably to the, to the one that has the master thoroughfare, thoroughfare plan, let's just click slide 19. There you go. So, I understand from the city taking over the domain of private roads and using this process as a way of funding their improvements. How does that work? Cause like, I, I, we do have like 1139 that is a state-owned road, and I can't see the legend good enough on this to see if that was one of the roads that's identified as benefiting from this impact fee assessed of the roadways. How's that work with the state?
So, what we, the direction we got from city administration is to include the, the state-owned roads as a 20% match, so that if the city were to participate in a state project, they could, you could use impact fee dollars to, towards that local match, essentially. But it, we don't include the full cost of state roads on the CIP.
Okay, thank you. And I think that was the last question I had.
Anyone else? Sir?
I have one more, to, 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 I think-
I, I think the minute I try to come up with a city that's comparable, it'll probably be wrong, the first one I come up with, but I can tell you there's several right around you that, that are doing impact fees, Heath is doing it, Fate is doing it, we, we did the study most recently for Fate. A lot of cities around Metroplex, both, you know, urban, suburban, and rural are, are doing it. So, cities of various, various sizes, we did, a few years ago, we did Gainesville, which they're a little, little larger, they're two-service areas. I, it's, it's hard to describe essentially how, how developers approach it, not being part of the development community, but we, we, we do typically get, none of them like it, none of them wanna pay extra fees. Most of the big ones are, are used to it, they, they know that it's something that a lot of Texas cities do, and, and they, they plan it out, and they're, and they're budgeting when they're looking ahead at projects. That, so that's, but that's not to say that we don't get, we see cities get pushed back on, please don't raise the rates, or, you know, please lower these, or help us in, in some way or another. There, there is a balancing act to be had there, it does affect affordability of, of homes, and, and so that needs to be, needs to be balanced, and we, that's a, a common discussion we see among councils is, how do we set the rate appropriate to fund infrastructure, but not driveway development, and also maintain affordability of, and, and also attract businesses to the city, so.
From a, from a standpoint of, of following up on, on what he asked, could we benchmark any one of those too?
Yeah, we can, we can, any list of cities, you want us to come back with what they're currently charging for their roadway impact fees, we could, we can come back with a graph and show you, and, hey, this is what they're charging, if you wanna be on the high end, low end, in the middle, this is where you'd wanna be.
I, I think something that is in a single service district, as you described it, would be beneficial to have.
Sure.
I mean, I, I, benchmarking is always beneficial.
Yeah, we can, we can absolutely come back with that comparison.
Thank you.
And I would extend that request to see something more year over year, because I'd like to see, you got your projections of the land use is gonna be, you start implementing the impact fees, how's that actually affected what your projection was? Has it driven that projection down now because the cost is, went up for growth? And, and how well that tracker has been for the suggested fee rates, and what that impact is, or has been on land use, as it's been realized?
Yeah, I would say on that, what we generally have seen is, most of the cities that we serve that have impact fees are, they have seen growth rates similar to what the whole state has. Certain cities are growing faster than others. In terms of a, y- year after year, you know, direct causal link between impact fees and growth, that's not a data source, it's just available, we, that's not something that we have, but we can certainly provide what cities are charging, and, and you can look at what the growth has been over the last five, 10 years in those cities.
If you put the year-over-year stats in the data, I think that would be helpful.
Well, I think some comparison cities benchmarking against, uh, single service, and I'd also be interested in how we are gonna, what the compare, comparability is to Fate and Heath, and potentially, I don't know, if you can get the data for 402, that might be useful.
Yep.
So, we're, sort of understand where we sit, as we're advising council.
Yeah, of course.
Uh, I think, uh, do that mean, maybe, uh, you, you, uh, city, uh, could, could use it?
That's a great question, so it can be used anywhere in the service area, which in this case would be the city limits. The only requirement, requirements are though, that it has to be a CIP project, has to be on that, that map we just showed with the orange and red roads, has to be one of those roads. And, yeah, it has to be providing future growth, so it can't be used to maintain old roads, it has to be providing new capacity.
Can we, can we, can we, uh-
10 years from the time they're collected, they need to be spent.
Going around, Chris?
I was gonna go back to the, uh, so roadway impact fees, and I'll be back, applied back to other roadway infrastructure, city-approved or pre-planned developments. The analogy that we gave was about private roads being turned into city-owned roads. Would that be considered, from a legal point of view, as existing infrastructure, because the city didn't own it at that point, or would that be the city's acquisition of existing infrastructure, then taking over the, you know, the maintenance of it?
So, if I understand your question, it's, if development builds a road, that's a private road, and then the city takes over ownership of that road?
Right.
Would it be impact fee eligible?
Yes.
It would be impact fee eligible for the, two requirements, as, if that road got added to the thoroughfare plan, and then it also had, it, it also was a capacity upgrade, so if it was taken over by the city, but it was already built to full configuration, you couldn't spend impact fee dollars on it. But if it was two lanes of a, of a future four-lane road, and you wanna build those other two lanes, and it's now on the thoroughfare plan, then it can be included on the impact fee CIP, and impact fee dollars can be spent.
Sonoma Verde is city roads, they're not on your, not part of the master thoroughfare plan, not part of the, are they part of the study, or are they excluded?
I, I believe they were, I believe they were part of the growth that we projected.
They are, they are part of it.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so, ASA, I think we're, do you have anything else for us?
No, sir.
Um, so, 30th, we're gonna look at that date, uh, for the 30th, we'll have a meeting, we'll just tentatively plan 6:30. You'll find a appropriate location for us that will keep us legal and healthy and happy.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Until then, I thank you, Heath, for your service, and we are adjourned.